Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to call this meeting the order of the Mayor and Board of Commissioners for October the 26th, 2021. Can I get the roll call, please?
Commissioner Braun?
Yeah.
Commissioner Pearson?
Here.
Commissioner Shepard?
Here.
Commissioner Warnock?
Here.
Let the record show you have a quorum.
Thank you. Will you rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Will you bow your heads with me for a brief prayer?
Father God, I come to you tonight on behalf of our town, Lord. I ask that you watch over our citizens. I ask that you watch over our elected body and their families, Lord. Please be with our police department and our fire and rescue and EMTs. Also, please watch over our troops serving here and overseas. Be with us as we are here tonight and as we leave, in Jesus's name. Amen.
All right. First, on the agenda, Resolution 2021-12.
Okay, Mayor and Commissioners, what you have before you is Resolution 2021-12. This is a resolution because we are securing tax-exempt financing for the street repaving project that you authorized a couple of months ago, I believe towards the end of July. There are monies that because of the timing of it, we expended the monies before we got the tax-free financing. And so we need you to adopt a resolution that shows your intent to use the proceeds from the debt to reimburse the town. So in the past, we've not gone the route of tax-exempt financing, and everything has been covered in one document. But because we chose the route of tax-exempt financing, there are IRS regulations that require you to pass a resolution separate stating that it is your intent to reimburse yourself for expenses prior to receiving the debt. So the expenses I'm talking about are some engineering fees and a partial payment that was already made to the contractor who was awarded it. So if you would like, I'll read the resolution into the minutes.
Yes, please.
Okay. So it's Resolution 2021-12, a resolution declaring the official intent of the Town of Rising Sun to reimburse expenditures to be included with respect to certain projects or programs or from certain funds with the proceeds of debt, 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 debt. I'm going to skip the first couple of boilerplate "whereas's" and go to the fourth one, whereas pursuant to Section C-17(c)(2), the town is authorized and empowered to borrow in a manner prescribed in the laws of Maryland on its faith and credit for the construction and repair of sewage and water supply system and construction and repair of streets, and to give evidence of such indebtedness by the issuance of a promissory note. And whereas the town adopted Resolution 2021-03 to authorize the projects described therein and the financing of such projects, and whereas to facilitate an efficient borrowing program, the town intends to expend money on certain projects or programs or from certain funds prior to the issuance of debt by the town for such purposes. And whereas the town intends to reimburse such expenditures from the proceeds of debt to be issued by the town, and whereas to comply with applicable provisions of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended and Section 1.150-2 of the income tax regulations, it is necessary in order to reimburse such expenditures with the proceeds of tax-exempt debt that the town declare its official intent to make such reimbursement of expenditures. Now therefore be it dissolved by the Mayor and Commissioners of the Town of Rising Sun, it is evidenced by this resolution, the town intends to expend money on the cost of the acquisition, construction, improvement of the capital projects described in Resolution 2021-03 prior to the issuance of bonds or other debt obligations to reimburse such expenditures. With respect to such projects, the town reasonably expects to issue debt obligation for these projects in the estimated maximum principal amount of $800,000. Now therefore being enacted and further resolved that the Mayor and Commissioners have passed, approved, and adopted this resolution on this 26th day of October 2021.
Can I get a motion to approve Resolution 2021-12?
So moved.
Second. Shepard? It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Town Administrator, Veterans Day holiday. Do you have that?
Yes. This is something that you recall we have done in the past. In the town's Personnel Manual, it has a provision for when holidays fall on a Tuesday or a Thursday. It creates a day either before the holiday or a day after the holiday that sort of becomes a day where people would historically take vacation time, and there isn't a whole lot of productivity that goes on. So in the Personnel Manual, the elected body is authorized to declare that Monday before the Tuesday holiday or that Friday after the Thursday holiday as a holiday also. So Veterans Day occurs this year on a Thursday, creating that Friday situation. So if you are in favor of issuing that additional holiday, you would make a motion and adopt that. We'll vote on that here.
Is this an additional holiday or moving the holiday?
No, it's an additional holiday.
Because you'd have Friday off as well. Right? Correct?
That would be correct.
Okay. What's the board's pleasure with that?
I was under the impression we were talking about moving the holiday to Friday.
No. No, this is something that the board has put in the Personnel Manual a couple years ago because the prior boards were actually voting on doing that when this occasion would pop up. So we formalized it in a Personnel Manual while still leaving it up to the option of the elected body to do.
Any thoughts? I'll make a motion for discussion. Okay.
Second.
All right, discussion. I mean...
You get nothing done anyway. So they come in for a day. We've discussed this many times with many different boards that many of us have been on, and we come up with the same result, is it's a wasted day.
Right.
So why not try to give employees an extra day?
Yeah, we would also would include for the officers basically an extra holiday.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
What's up for a vote at this point?
Is there a motion on the floor?
There's a motion already. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Next on the agenda, we actually have a public presentation. So I'm going to move out of the way. Chief, I think you have that. Commissioner Pearson?
I have that as well. I think I'm going to need the assistance of my life to be with you, but...
All right, so Commissioner Warnock wants to come around as well. Just scooting that chair to the side.
Chief, if you might.
Okay, you're filming this. You're sending this live.
No.
To go first. All right.
Chicken.
All right, George, if I can have you come up. Great. Come between Chin and I. Quite a few citations for you.
All school stuff.
All right, so I've often talked before about the fact that first responders definitely don't do it for the glory. They certainly don't do it, especially here, for the riches. But they do it to help another human being in their most vulnerable moments. And I certainly think that that is one of the most honorable things a human being can do. So on behalf of the Town of Rising Sun, I have this Merrill citation to George Michael Venansky Jr. in honor of your retirement for 20 years of outstanding service with the Rising Sun Police Department. We thank you for your continued dedication and commitment to the people of Rising Sun and wish you best and continued success in the future. Now, this was done originally in January, but unfortunately because of the COVID pandemic, we had to wait to do it till tonight. But we are honored to have had you for 20 years, George, and we wish you well in your retirement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, if you can step in closer.
All right, Chief, I think you have a few more?
I have a few, and actually I'm going to let Commissioner Pearson go ahead before me.
Okay. George, where are you?
Where are you, buddy?
The Maryland General Assembly Official Citation. It is hereby known to all that sincerest congratulations are offered to Master Patrol Officer George Michael Venansky Jr. in recognition of retirement after 20 years of outstanding service with the Rising Sun Police Department. Prior to serving the local community, MPO Venansky served honorably with the U.S. Army in peacekeeping missions at Bosnia, presented on the 16th day of January by the Cecil County delegation.
Thanks, buddy.
That one was actually from the Senate.
Senate? No, I have...
You have the delegates.
This is the Senate.
Okay.
This one seemed appropriate for me to handle. Recognition of recognition, I'm sorry, certificate of recognition from Cecil County, Maryland, presented to Master Patrol Officer George Michael Venansky Jr. in appreciation for your 20 years of dedicated service with the Rising Sun Police Department and your service to the United States Army. We congratulate you on your retirement and extend our best wishes for your good health and happiness, presented this a few days, a few months ago, second day of April, on behalf of County Executive Daniel Hornberger and the County Council.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So this one's the General Assembly. Also, be hereby known to all that sincerest congratulations are offered to George Michael Venansky Jr., Master Patrol Officer, in recognition of your 20 years of dedicating service to the citizens of the Town of Rising Sun, Cecil County, the state of Maryland, and our country. Thank you for your service. We wish you the best in your future endeavors, and that is from Cecil County Senate delegation.
Thank you, guys. Thanks.
Okay, and lastly, official citation, Maryland General Assembly. Be it hereby known that all sincerest congratulations are offered to George Michael Venansky Jr. in recognition of his 20 years of dedicated service to the citizens of the Town of Rising Sun. This is from Delegate Mike Redd.
Thank you.
20 years.
20 years.
That's the equivalent of 35,000 hours in a one-square-mile patrol area.
Lot of circles.
That's a lot of time. In that time, you have a ton of people that like you, hate you, and you become what's called a legend in places. There's folklore now that says George Venansky.
Of course.
So with that being said, I'd like to congratulate you, and I can't pin the badge on you for retirement, but buddy, you get it.
Thank you. I don't need a speech. Everybody knows who I am. You know how I feel.
But I do think you owe the chief and I something for all the gray hair that you gave us during those 20 years.
Well, we'll have to talk about that later because I don't want to do it online.
I didn't have this until I met you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
All right, moving into Citizens' input. Do you see any Citizens' input?
Do you want to do this?
No? Okay. We're going to move into Office Manager. Judy, do you have that report?
I do. I'm not going to spend a lot of time except to do some highlights of the first quarter. If you look at the general fund, we are tracking to be very solid in the general fund. We have already collected about 50% of our real estate tax and debt service tax. And looking at some key things would be also salaries and wages. We are below budget, and we're not tracking right now to even get close to budget. So going to be coming about $100,000 light there. But next in your pack, you will find the checks. There's a check register for the general fund. Looking at water, we are tracking with a positive balance in water. That fund is handling stuff really well. We are tracking to be on with revenue. The revenue that we're going to generate is coming in line very closely to what we budgeted. And there's a check register that goes along with that. With the sewer fund, it's showing a negative, but we have already paid the December payment for USDA. So there's an extra bump in interest there. That was because they actually took the payment twice, and we just told them to go ahead and let that be the December payment. We're tracking for the revenue that was projected very solid, and there's a check register behind that. Did a little recap. I know you know that I watch our receivables and try to make sure that we stay current with everything. Right now, if you look at how we are with actual outstandings, we have almost 3% in over 120 days, but that's four accounts that two of them are sewer-only, and the balances are pretty high. We have one of those sewer-only's on a payment plan. We are looking at, where we do the monthly cutoffs and we also have payment plans, we're actually managing being able to keep the receivables very current and collecting on a regular basis. Did include in there an item of interest. We are now almost 50/50 for online payments versus paper payments. We're still working to get that to 75%. We feel like that'll be a really good thing for the community as well as for the town. Handling communications, we handle around 400 calls a month and send out, to send electronic bills, we send about 578 or close to 600, as you'd say. Work orders for Public Works, they actually completed 31 work orders, which if you look at the report, it'll tell you what those work orders are for. Also, they collected 10 tons of yard waste in addition to all the other things that they do with the mowing, with their events. And I would like to give a big shout out to them and thank them very much for their efforts with Spooktacular. With a team like that, it was just, everything went really well. Also, look at cash projections. If you look at the spreadsheet at the back, it'll give you an idea of where we stand as far as cash flow, things that are happening over the next month. And that's really it for me. If you have any questions at all, after you review the pack, just let me know.
Thank you, Judy. Chief, do you have a report this evening?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Just briefly, wanted to touch on two things. As everyone is aware, that we did have an officer injured a few weekends ago. I just wanted to update you on his status. He has, you know, some minor abrasions and bruising. He's undergoing treatment now for injuries to that one arm, one hand. But spirit-wise, he's fine. Should be back to work shortly. In addition to that, I have checked into the status of the car that we've ordered, and they still say we're on track for first quarter of January 2022. I was hoping that it would happen a little sooner, but I'm hoping it doesn't get pushed back with the current nature of components and backlogs and backorders. Beyond that, I don't have much more, or have anymore. So unless there's some questions.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Town Administrator, do you have a report this evening?
The biggest thing I wanted to update everybody on is the line striping at Valley View for the parking spaces. I just received the text from Chris Wiggins. He'll be able to come in on Thursday of this week and do from Valley View the intersection in the middle up to the left and up the hill. So the plan is to do that upper section. We will post that on Facebook and send out some door knockers to the residents affected. This will take maybe two or three hours to get done, and within about an hour or two after it is striped, people will be able to drive on it. So it's not an all-day event. It'll only be shut down for maybe five or six hours during the day. We also received the grant agreement paperwork for the Rural Maryland Council for the broadband waterline replacement grant. So we executed that today, and we're working with KCI to get the proper surveys and engineering that's needed to figure out exactly how all that's going to work out on Mount Street to redo the waterlines and then get the broadband out to Route 1 corridor. Now, I'm not sure if you are going to report on it or not. I'll leave it for you as a habitat for humanity. But we did do a footing inspection out there for the project on Monday. So they are moving along with the construction of that house. That's all I have.
Thank you, Town Administrator. Do we have the Town Attorney or Town Engineer?
The Town Attorney's not here, but we do have the Town Engineer.
Okay.
Hello, everyone. This is Ryan. I'm going to update first, and then I'll pass it over to Scott. Few just status updates on the water, wastewater, and things. As Calvin mentioned, we're working full speed ahead on that Mount Street water and broadband project to make sure we meet the funding, the funding agency's aggressive timeline. So we'll be in good shape for that. That's our priority number one. We've also, we're also finalizing a, what I'll call a general work plan, to address the town's overall I&amp;I investigations for inflow infiltration making its way into the town's sewer line. I believe it's a good holistic approach in terms of realizing, you know, how to best tackle the low-hanging group, but also, you know, addressing problems in certain areas when there's already other projects going on and you're already paving and doing other utility construction. So I'll be submitting that over to Calvin, and I think we should have a follow-up discussion with the DPW Department as well. Lastly, the hydraulic modeling task to look at the potential for additional flows from Chester Water. Cal, I just wanted to give you an update. We're ready on our end. We've been in touch with CWA to get the hydraulic information from their system that we need to finalize the analysis. But interestingly enough, Brian McKeown actually has recently retired. So we're working with Steve, sort of their second-in-command there for that type of information. So as soon as we get the information from CWA, we'll be able to finalize that analysis and get that response over to the town as well. Those are the major updates on my end. Before I pass it over to Scott, does anybody have any questions for me?
Thank you, Ryan.
All right, thank you very much. I'll pass it over to Scott. Have a good night.
Good evening, everyone. And first, congratulations on receiving the grant funding. I always found that stuff exciting and challenging at the same time. So it's nice to see that those funds are going towards the things that they were initially intended to use. My update really relates to the street program. The contractor has been away from the sites for about two weeks. They were due to remobilize tomorrow, but the weather has delayed them by one day. They will be remobilizing to Turtleback Court and Mason Run Lane on Thursday of this week with the intent to begin milling a four-inch-deep swath and then come back with about a two-inch base layer immediately so that we're not exposed to the weather and we can get a base coat of asphalt down, and then top coat would shortly come shortly thereafter. So the order of paving that I understand right now will be Turtleback Court, Mason Run Lane, Pearl Street, and then Crowther Street, I believe. And that's the tentative schedule that should take place over the next two weeks. So hopefully, by the end of two weeks, we'll be wrapped up and cleaned up from the paving. So that's the current target. It's always subject to change with the weather at this time of year, but the contractor seems pretty confident that he can knock those four roads out and also be able to do an evaluation for us on some work on Mount Street to address some safety issues that the manager has outlined for us. So we hope to wrap up the street program within two weeks and be able to close the books on the 2021 program. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
You're welcome.
All right, moving into the Mayor's report. Excuse me, but my report's going to be a little long tonight. Lots of things have occurred since our last town meeting. I've visited the Rising Sun High School to judge their homecoming hallway. They did a great job, all the classes did. I returned and did their homecoming pep rally, where because of Chief Peterson not being able to be there, I almost got ran down by the junior class for the Homecoming Spirit Stick. But they were the winners of the Homecoming Spirit Week competition. The Town Administrator and Chief Peterson also attended with me a banner placement at Calvert Regional Park. As you know, Calvert Regional Park draws thousands of tournaments and competitions. The Town of Rising Sun is only a few minutes away, and we offer so much. This banner has been in the planning for a while. I want to thank Cecil County Parks and Recreation Director Clyde Van Dyke, County Executive Hornberger. I also want to thank Commissioner Warnock for riding the Parks and Recreation Director to get it done. But we are excited to have a temporary banner with the plan to have a full-size sign placed there to advertise the different businesses that are here in Rising Sun. We continue to do as much as we can to support our local small businesses. My good friend, the Lieutenant Governor, Boyd Rutherford, attended a ceremony for the Rising Sun Fire Company. Afterwards, we joined him for lunch at Riviera Maya. He commended the Rising Sun Community Fire Company for 100 years of service to Rising Sun and the greater Cecil County area. It was great to see him. It was great to spend time with the Lieutenant Governor. This is the fourth time he's visited the Town of Rising Sun. The elected body and myself also attended the Maryland Five Star, which was a great event held over from Thursday until Sunday. It was great to watch some competition. It was great to see some Rising Sun businesses always represented there at the Maryland Five Star. I think the inaugural went very well. I want to commend all those that were involved in planning that, and we look forward to next year, hopefully bigger and better. Spooktacular happened while, this past Saturday. It was a great event. The rain held off, but then came back a little bit. So we had some wild weather during that day. But I do want to commend the Public Works crew, Judy Melton, our Town Manager, Jenna Pratt, one of our office staff. I also want to commend Chief Peterson and his staff for providing traffic safety. I also want to say that it was a great event. We had a lot of people return. It was great to have a sense of normalcy, come back to our community, and see so many people out enjoying the Town of Rising Sun. We had so many different activities, and the costume contest went well. And I also want to say a big thanks to Councilman Al Miller for providing the fair wagon for the hayride. A huge thank you to him for doing that, and our Public Works was, were able to drive the hayride. So that was great. I also want to commend Sun Pharmacy, who was recently honored, thanks to Cecil County Economic Development for their 50 years of service to the Town of Rising Economic Development for their fifty years of service to the town of Rising Sun. Town Administrator Bonnenberger and Commissioner Warnock were there for a presentation from the Cecil County Economic Development Office. That is the conclusion of my report. I also wanted to add one last thing, and that is the Habitat for Humanity groundbreaking that we had. The Habitat for Humanity groundbreaking was attended by myself, Commissioner Shepherd, and Town Administrator Bonnenberger. It was great to spend some time with Anthony Jones, who is the new homeowner, and it was great to see the hard work that they are doing there at that site on North Walnut Street. That's in, they're also working with the Cecil County School of Technology, who actually built the house on Cecil County technology property, and they're going to be bringing it in, but they're doing footers, they're, they're pouring the foundation. I also spoke a little bit about how Habitat for Humanity builds relationships with homeowners, volunteers, and sponsors. They definitely build not just home, houses, but they build homes. So a thank you to them for working in our community. That concludes my report. Commissioner Braun?
I have no report.
All right. Commissioner Pearson?
Nothing.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Uh, no report tonight.
Commissioner Warnock?
No report.
All right. Upcoming town meetings, we have a meeting on November the ninth, and then we have another meeting on November the twenty. Upcoming holidays. Upcoming holidays is Veterans Day, which is November the eleventh. And you can see on the agenda our trash recycling and yard waste schedule. Can I get a motion for adjournment?
Yeah, I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Seconds? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.